I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of June 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 21st meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is approval of claims for payment totaling eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents.
Make a motion to approve the claims for payment for this week.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now to item number six, which is approvals fiscal year 2017-18 salaries. We have a chart in front of us. It's, we've been waiting for a work study to come back. At one time we budgeted for 1% raise to everyone. The work study came back, there were a lot of questions to be asked on the work study. I haven't got all my answers back on that yet. Where are you guys at?
After getting the preliminary draft from Paul, our HR consultant, I'm not satisfied with the data set that we received. I feel that there were some job descriptions that were not adequately written, whether they're exempt, non-exempt at this point, and, you know, where, where those need to be. The other thing is, we, we were explained to that there were some positions that were underpaid, some of that were overpaid, and we need to figure out how to get those in balance. And I don't think last week's meeting gave us enough time to do our due diligence or research to figure out where we need to be while being fair but fiscally responsible, but treat people as human beings in that process. So, I'm not ready to act on anything today.
I would agree, for a lot of the same reasons BJ's mentioned too, so, I would...
The unions have already been agreed upon as far as the contracts go. They come into effect the first pay period in July. Would you be willing to act on that part?
I, I'd be more than willing to act on the union agreements. Those agreements were ratified months ago, and so we need to act, I, I believe we can act on those since those were all agreed to, and there's really no way of, you know, anything changing in those at this point. So, I would be comfortable moving to approve the salaries of the secondary roads union agreements and the sheriff's department union agreements. If we don't, I feel that we'll have, will be, there'll be some type of grievance filed against the county in, in that event.
I would second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, also, the elected officials were also set, and would it be bad if we went ahead with 1%, took our time, got something going, took our time to get this work study lined up, and we can always adjust from there?
Yeah. So, to approve the elected official salaries?
Yeah, I said, I was talking two things there.
Oh.
We could do the elected officials, I know that, but also the 1% for the not, yeah, okay.
Well, the thing is, is some of the employees need to be frozen.
Or, or do we, or do we go ahead and do the 1% and then work our way through the rest of it?
From a logistics standpoint, Jessica, how tough is that for going back and readjusting?
I think I'd rather just hold off and do it all at the same time, because otherwise it's gonna make extra work for...
Doing retroactive pay and stuff just doesn't seem like it.
Payroll deputy to change them for the 1st of July, and then change them again later on.
Okay. I'm just asking.
But I would, I would make a motion to also approve the elected official salary as adjusted by the board supervisors during the budget process.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? I, I have a hard time paying the boss and not doing anything with the employees yet. Would we be retroactive on the employees? Or should we just hold off on, on all of that until, and be retroactive on it all at one shot, or?
The compensation board set the elected officials, so that's out of our hands, so...
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then, what's left would be all the non-union employees and non-elected.
And we can determine whether that should be retroactive, and I don't see why it couldn't be, but we can also decide that later.
Right.
Now, given the work study, do you believe that some people should go back through and relook to see if the jobs are right as well? If the department heads are, are written down correctly in the same process as we're doing this?
I think it would be up to the department heads or elected officials to review where their employees fall in the scale, and if there's duties that they left out in the original job description that was provided to Paul, then they could make those adjustments, get those, get those fixed so that the salary would be adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Daryl is also...
So, we need to approve canceling your contract.
Sure.
All right.
So, what, what questions do you need answered?
One question was on some of the employees, are they currently exempt or non-exempt employees?
Okay.
And I haven't been answered on that yet.
I thought that was answered by email last night.
It was.
As to who?
Yeah, and the, well, as to which positions are...
So, would there be a change of status at the same time, along with the exempt, non-exempt salaries and everything? That, that's one of the questions.
I'm trying to figure out how I can facilitate this, so that's why I'm asking what questions you have to be answered, because I don't want this to wait further. It gives the impression that, it gives the impression that you didn't like the results of the survey. I don't think that that's what you want the impression to be, therefore, I'm trying to help facilitate getting this finalized. So, what can I do to help? Do I need to schedule Paul to come back and be in a room with three of you for two hours? Do I need to make sure that we're all included on the same emails? Do I need to schedule a conference call? What is it that I can do to help so that this does not get delayed further? Because the further it's delayed...
We would have to meet with Paul.
We have angry, upset employees who've never gone into July 1, not knowing what's coming or going.
Right. I, I can't take, personally, I received the email with revised draft numbers last night. I don't, I don't think it's fair to anybody to say, get this...
Do you know why you got that last night?
No, ma'am.
It's Jessica.
Because I asked for it.
Right.
Do you know why you didn't get it before then? Because someone told him to hold off.
Oh. We had told him last week we wanted it as soon as possible.
Yeah, we, we, the three of you, and then someone said to hold off.
Oh.
And so, when I found that out, I said, please send the information, so they have the information, because it is on the agenda.
I also emailed Paul and asked him to send it, because I, I have nothing...
Yeah, we were waiting since last week.
Right, but he held off because he was instructed to do so, not by me.
Oh, I had, okay.
But if we do this today, as far as the ones that we're approving, the only ones left would be the employees, and I think what I would like to see is, if there, I, I would like to have a meeting with Paul.
Okay, that, that's all I want here. And I want to, I want to schedule that and make sure I did that taking care of it for you then.
But I understand there's been some very upset people, which I have an opinion about some of that too, about reactions, but I think it's up to the department heads, if they have an issue with the job descriptions, I think it's up to them to bring them to us, or, or go back to the group that analyzed the job descriptions and, and get those things worked out. But, am I correct that we could get the rest of them done next week?
I, I think, I think the progress stalled last week when we had a department head meeting, and we were handed a draft document and asked not to take that document outside of the department heads while the supervisors looked at it, and instead, somebody, one department head took it and shared it with their employees and derailed the process for part of the day. I'll just be honest with everybody, that that was not the intention. We were trying to do our best. We were given a draft document, and one department head went and shared it and caused the wheels of the train to come off. Very inappropriate. That, that has to be dealt with. So, you know, when the wheels of the train come off, that means we've gotta figure out a way to get back on track, but at no point was the document that the human resource company gave us going to be the end-all, be-all, but one department had decided it was, and through panic throughout the building and throughout the community, and it, it looks horrible. So now, I agree with Attorney Dunn last week, we need to do, step back, look at it, do our due diligence, and then act. Yeah, it is July 1st. I knew about this work study while I was campaigning, so it's been two and a half years, and for some reason, all the data wasn't properly given in two and a half years. I, I mean, that says a lot about the problem right there. And so now that we're having to backtrack yet, it is, it is bad for the employees, but I'd rather do it right this time and, you know, do the right thing by everybody than have to circle back around and try to correct problems every couple of weeks. And I would like Paul to, you know, show up and be here to, you know, not just email something.
That's something I can assist you with, and that's what I want to do.
And I would appreciate that.
Yeah, if you could facilitate that, that would be great.
Yeah. I just wanna...
And I would be, personally, I'm in favor of making those adjustments retroactive to July 1st for all employees.
I would rather do that than to implement something that's going to throw off everything.
Right.
Right.
I wanna do it once.
Me too.
Yep.
Yep.
As per that question that somebody asked him to, also references me asking that question because I want more answers, that doesn't mean I have the authority, and he knows that as well, that one directed to give this to us, he didn't.
No.
No.
He said, "You spoke on behalf of the board."
I did not, and I was very clear on that.
I'm not agreeing with you, Lance. I'm saying, when I spoke to him last night, he said, "He took what you said to him as authoritative, because you're the chairperson of the board, and when he was told to hold off, he held off."
And that's what he told me too, when I called him.
And he said the same thing to Renee last night. I'm not fighting with you. I'm saying, he took it as gospel and acted on it. That's what I'm saying.
Because that's what, he did indicate that to you too.
And I never intended to say that you did it.
Yeah, the, the thing I'm holding off on is, I don't think we have all the information, and we need the information.
Now, we're back to my original question. What is it that you need?
You need to meet with him to get this information that he was supposed to be getting to us.
Then that's what I do.
He asked, he asked about this chart. We still need the information to be able to act on anything.
I, I don't want you to...
Did he provide the...
I'm sorry. I want you to know, I will facilitate you having a meeting with him.
Good. Did he provide the employees who he thinks were exempt or are exempt, the positions?
There are three people that we were being, we were discussing, and those are the people that were tallied up for the email that you got for the dollar figures of going from non-exempt to exempt, or vice versa. I, I forget who, I apologize.
Yep.
It's three employees. Now, while they were disclosed in that email, I know who he's talking about.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess I'd just like to continue on with the elected official salaries, and I think we probably could address Daryl's, since he's a contract employee. But then, hopefully by next week, if you can arrange that with Paul, hopefully we can have our answers and we can finish this next week.
Would you like to make a motion?
I think, do we have a motion on the floor, Nancy, for approving elected official salaries?
We've already done that.
And we voted on that?
We're done.
Okay.
Plus, you had a resolution months ago that wouldn't be acted on before the budget was drafted on conference.
Yeah.
Recommendation, you had a resolution that allowed you to...
Approve those.
Right.
Okay.
So now we have Daryl's.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve County Engineer Daryl Albertson's contract as prior, previously negotiated.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do you have any contract? Is that what it is? Do you have any contract? Is there a new contract?
Yeah, we had it back in December, the contract.
It's in the middle of the contract. It's not a new one.
It would've been the December one, which would've already triggered. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on salaries?
I, I wanna say, I did not intend for this to be finger pointing when I asked if there was something I can facilitate, so please do not be offended in any way, but that's the way this discussion went. There's a lot of upset people from top all the way down.
There've been a lot of upset people for a long time.
Right, but you have to understand now, this cork has blown off the bottle, and emotions are spilling over.
Yes.
And I really wanna get us back to the Hardin County family that I know that we all were prior to any discussion of money came up, so...
Thank you.
I agree.
Item number seven, a change of status assessor's office falls right into the same This being said, a employee has changed positions with a raise in play.
However, there was no, I guess I would like to know what the job changes have been to her, to this position. I mean, it looks to me like it's just a, a change of the name of the, of the position, and I guess I don't know, are there changes to her job description that triggered this? Or is it...
I'm curious about the duties and required skills. Did she pass a test? Is there a new certification? Is there something that, you know, required an increase? So, I have questions about what prompted the increase? What duties and qualifications changed?
If there were none that changed, this is just the thing that I don't want to happen because of the salary study, is that people just change the job title to give them more money. I mean, I just, I just wanna verify that that's what not, that's not going on.
Dawn here, I don't see him.
Be comfortable. I'll make a motion to table the change of status until we find out what the duties and qualifications that would imply a increase was applicable.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries are tabled. Next I have is a change of status to the property management.
I will make a motion to approve the employee change of status form for the hiring of a full-time property, or in the property management department, as the position would be an assistant to the property manager, and the newly hired employee is Jared Manager. Dates of employment, it says June 30th, 17.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Also has in the side note, January 1st, there's a thousand dollar raise if meets requirements.
Evaluate July 1st, 2019 for additional wage increase.
Any other discussion? I know it didn't work within the work study, job study that came in, the dollar amount, but he was offered this money before the job study also came in. Any more discussion?
I, I can tell you, actually, the job description that the team evaluated was custodian, it wasn't assistant property manager.
Right.
So you may wanna change that job description to reflect that.
Okay, his new one, yep, as he comes in.
Right.
Yep.
Because what the study did was the title of custodian.
Right.
Custodian is different.
For comparables, right.
Oh, all right.
That's what I want that to be.
So rather than assistant, it would be custodian?
Well, that's what the team evaluated, but if you wanted to be assistant, that's fine, but you need to tweak the job description to apparently add more duties.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a tax abatement resolution. Michelle, you wanna talk on this, or?
Yeah, we have some very, very old utility tax that's been on the books. Company went bankrupt, it's just been kind of getting pushed off to the side, pushed off to the side. Bert Dunn helped me get some letters out to other counties that had the same situation way back when, even before I was treasurer, and they have all had to abate all their taxes as well. There was an agreement between this company and the board supervisors at that time, when they were having trouble, that they would pay us when they got every other county settled up, and they agreed upon that, well, no one got their money. So, this is just kind of a cleanup issue. We've just gotta get this off the books. It's just one of those things that it's, I judged as impractical to, to collect, because there's no business anymore.
Right.
And there's no money, and there hasn't been forever, so it's just kind of a cleanup deal that we can get off our books.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the tax abatement resolution as provided by Hardin County Treasurer.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Your vote, Paul, please.
I'm sorry.
BJ.
Aye.
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 And then I do have one more, with the power outage and everything today, I'm just out of sorts here. Came in early to get things done, and it didn't happen, so, I have one other, that the City of Eldora took a deed to through the court order, through the abandonment process, and we're gonna be abating all those taxes as well. And just like an FYI, we don't have to have your blessing for that, because of the code says that the court makes us do that, but I wanted to make you aware of that. It was a property that was owned by William Riley, that the City of Eldora took a deed to.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was really old, old taxes as well, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Next I have is application for fireworks permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for fireworks for air install at 33879200 Street, Steamboat Rock. They will be doing a fireworks display on July 1st or 2nd, weather permitting and burn ban permitting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have another one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Balvance family fireworks application at 26697250 Street, Eldora. Their fireworks display, yeah, July 2nd, 2017.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have no more unless you do.
Nope.
Next is discussion on compensation board representative appointments. At this time, any names I've even tried to get ahold of aren't interested.
Okay.
If you guys have any names to appoint for our comp board position, we have both openings that are up.
I think Diana's only served one term. I haven't talked to her, but I can contact her to see if she's interested in staying on.
Okay.
Then, yeah, I'll just do some brainstorming.
Okay. That's all I had on it.
Openings on the compensation board for just general public, or what? How does that work?
It's appointees...
Each elected official gets to choose a compensation board member, the supervisor from the public.
Okay, good.
The supervisors get to choose two.
I would be happy to be on your team. Please do.
Will do, thank you. Any other discussion on that? All right, next I have is change of status, secondary roads department.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Skylar Clark in the secondary roads department. He was temporary seasonal part-time, and he will no longer be working in that, in that job.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
And it's due to him being hired as the roadside vegetation management technician, so, which is next.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is change of status, IRVM department.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Skylar Clark in the IRVM department as a roadside vegetation management technician at fifteen dollars an hour, full-time. Daryl, what was his official start date?
When was his official end date for secondary roads?
Uh, the 22nd, so 23rd.
No. Oh, it was?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Sorry.
The top of the form says it's 26, so it must've been the 23rd, okay. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we have is discussion action on 310th Street, Honey Creek Church Road. We've been talking about this for some time, and we've got narrowed down some options. Daryl, you wanna talk about this? We have some people here that also...
I guess who's all here for to give an opinion? Just two of you? On 310th Street, anybody else? Okay. Sent a letter out to all the adjacent landowners and asked to either send us a written response or show up in person, and we've received three responses, and it was to discuss whether to turn that road back to gravel, to fix it in the state it's in with seal coating, or to actually pave it. Some people think that it's been paved already, but it's, it's not technically considered paving, it's been seal coated, it's not a paved road. paving, it's been seal coated, it's not a pavement, so. Anyway, so we have gotten three responses, I don't know if you want to summarize them or?
Summarize them, yeah. If you want to go through. Option one was, do you want me to read the responses from the people, or are they?
Yeah, it's up to you guys, I don't want to.
First of all, Steve, you're here, you want to talk on behalf of it at all? Or you're just here to listen?
Well, I'm here to listen as well as just to encourage some work to get done. Before, before we get to fall, once again, because it's been a couple of years that we've tried to get this done and we've not gotten it done. It's really hard on equipment. All of our grain, it's our interstate highway to S-57. And until it gets done, it's really creates havoc with tires and heavy machinery that doesn't have shocks or, you know, you just basically have to slow down and crawl through some of the areas.
Hard on axles.
It is, it's very hard. And I know Daryl's worked to try to get some, you know, workable solutions that are cost, you know, effective for the county and I'm interested in that as well as getting something more permanently done.
Okay. Was there a comment from over here also?
Yes, I've lived there now just 20 years. Was that just a seal coat that they put on?
Yeah, layer after layer seal coat.
And it was just new, newly put on when I bought the place there 20 years ago. And it's, it's held up fairly well until the last five years. That's potholes. I would be in favor, I don't know how much difference in cost it'd be to turn it in gravel or to redo it again. It probably, it's probably more expensive, I understand that, but I sure appreciate it. It was a big selling point for me to have that blacktop and we've lived there 20 years and I'm getting older now and I'm thinking about maybe having to move it again. I would like to see it kept up that way, if at all possible. And I, I see the road that going west over to your place and every time there's a big rain, the gravel all washes off and they have to haul in more gravel and this will be the same way if you turn it into gravel. Because that little stretch of gravel there, every time it rains, it turns into a mud hole and it's potholes in it and it washes off of there. There's hills there, I came from Brandy County where we didn't have any hills, so I know what it was like on the gravel roads. But this, this, I see this every time as you go over that hill going west, there's ruts about this deep along both sides of the road that wash out and the grader has to come and they have to haul in more gravel almost every time there's a good, good set of rain. I would like to see it done, that seal coat again lasts another 20 years, I think that'd be fairly cost-effective too. Maybe that's just selfish on my part, but I, I would like to see it done that way again.
Yeah, thank you. Do you guys want to go through the letters that were read? Do you want to read them, or?
I don't think we need to read the whole thing, I think just kind of summarize what the request was from various individuals.
I'll be, I'll share a couple of them. One from Ms. Jane Whitehead states, "I am a landowner on that road, my land and house are rented out. The land and house are located at the east end of the road, which means my tenant family does not have very far to drive on it. However, my farm tenants do drive the length of 310th Street with farm equipment as well as personally. I recently drove the road and my comments was, quote, 'Something has to be done about this road,' unquote. I would recommend either making it all gravel or fully paving it rather than giving it another seal coat. Thanks for considering some type of improvement at your meeting, Ms. Jane Whitehead." The second letter is from Mr. Frederick Marsh. "I've lived on 310th Street over 60 years and own adjacent farmland. I am concerned for the road's maintenance. My preference would be for a paved road, not just a coating of blacktop. I would hope that this would include PP Avenue in front of the Honey Creek Friends Meeting House to the entrance of the Honey Creek Cemetery. The church is visited frequently and services are held there various times throughout the year. Also, for funerals and burials, access to the cemetery is important. All these things would warrant a hard surface road. If I had a second choice, it would be for a soil, a solid-based, well-maintained gravel road. If the landowners are to be assessed for the cost of this road, it would be, this cost would have a bearing on the kind of surface to be applied and what my choice would ultimately be. I would want the best possible surface on the road that is still affordable. Thank you for advising us about this, the planned project, and thank you for allowing our input, Mr. Frederick Marsh."
I have a third one as well.
Okay.
I'll let you finish.
This is a letter from the Honey Creek Church Preservation Group. "Originally, this stretch of road was paved in the 1960s after the existing gravel road was so bad with mud and ruts during the winter and spring that it was impassable for quite a while. During that time, several funerals and interments for the cemetery were scheduled and then postponed to a later date because of the travel over the road was impossible. The supervisors at the time deemed it necessary to have the road in a condition where travel would not be contingent on the condition of the road. The Honey Creek Friends Church has been on the National Historic Register, Historic Places since 1980. It uses genealogy for families dating back to 1852 when the Quakers first settled here. These documents, pictures, and books are frequently used by people researching their families. Special services are annually held through the year in the building as well as weddings, reunions, and gatherings. The short description, for those who may not be familiar with the church and cemetery, will give you a sense of the need for a decent road to this historic site. A hard surface road on a regular maintenance schedule with all the other hard surface roads in the county will ensure safe travel. A well-built surface road shows strong support in the value that citizens of Harden County and the state of Iowa place on historic places. Sincerely, the Honey Creek Preservation Group."
Well, from there, let's go to options. We have three options that are presented. One, which is take it back to gravel. And one being taking part of it, just the bad part back to reseal or pavement.
Right, the, the first option would be milling it all off and then replacing with gravel, bringing it up. The second option would be to do some asphalt patching there and leveling it and then seal coating over that. Actually, there's seal coating at twice. And then the third one would be to mill it all and then pave it. The one thing in common with all three is on the east end, no matter what we do, we need to replace that runout, you know, we go back 75 feet on gravel roads, that's really bad, so that has to be, and even if we go gravel it like that, it's state pavement, that part, so. So your costs run anywhere, from my calculations, to return it to a gravel road would be around fifty thousand dollars. Now you've got to remember, that doesn't include any county labor or fuel or trucks. I'm making the assumption that we're running them anyway, those trucks are moving anyway. So the second option, we'd be looking at a hundred and nine thousand dollars and that's for the patching and then seal coating. And then the last option to pave that would be two hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Option one with turning it to gravel, you're still doing that runout, correct?
Yes, and all three, no matter what, you need that runout.
Included in those prices.
Yes, it's included in all three.
So fifty thousand to do a runout, turn it to gravel, a hundred thousand to patch and repair and reseal coat just the bad spot with a runout, and two hundred and sixty-four thousand to pave the entire stretch.
Correct. And, and this is just an estimate and, and so you know that if you were to decide to pave it, that we wouldn't be able to use this, that since that's considered new paving, that would have to be a set of plans developed and then that would have to be let because it's over the eighty, eighty-two thousand dollar threshold.
And it's considered new paving because it never was paved, it was just seal coated?
According, yeah, technically, yep.
Okay. What are your feelings?
I would like to get accurate bids. I mean, are, how, how far off would these bids be, Daryl?
Oh, they're pretty close.
Are they pretty close? So they're fairly recent?
You figure to pave a mile, it's a million bucks, so this is roughly a quarter mile, a little over.
Okay.
Or is, no, it's like a half.
It's going to happen, I don't think.
Yeah. The paving, that's just paving, that is included. I'd say it's great.
But the length of it, I mean, whether you pave it or what, it's going to be just the length of what the blacktop has been or the seal coating has been in the past?
If you're going to repave it, you can take it around the corner if you want, you know, to the cemetery, like, you can do whatever you want. I don't know how much farther, but I think there's a park, entrance just down.
Yeah, another quarter, a mile down.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to pave it, you have many options, how far you want to go with it.
If you're going to pave it, what timeframe be on something like that?
I don't think it'd take too long to put a set of plans together, you know, a couple of years.
Just looking at Steve's expression.
We're really busy right now, so I don't think that if we were putting plans together and have it paved, that we can get it done this, this year, it'd have to be next year in the spring. Plus, I think we'd probably get a better price than that in the spring.
Then you'd have to lettings and everything else?
We have to let it, yeah. It could be a local letting, so, you know, that goes a lot quicker than a DOT, we don't have to meet all their deadlines and set our own deadlines.
What do you think about the seal coating? How long would that last again?
I don't think it would last very long, honestly.
I know it was more, more heavy machinery, truck, truck than when we first came there.
Right.
And like I said, it's lasted 20 years this way with just minimal pothole fixing.
Minimal until just recently.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's what we're finding, so.
Well, it's getting thinner.
And it's hard to, when you get to that point, you can't just go in and grade it up like a gravel road, you know, and take the potholes out, it's, it's a process, so. It can be done.
If, if we were to go back in and change it to gravel, what would we do with the millings that are on there? Bring it back to the plant?
You wouldn't have to have the cost of the millings if you didn't want initially, you know, we could take it up in chunks, but since it's a seal coat, you know, it's petroleum-based, you can't just dump it. We can't just take it and put it in the ground.
Right.
So we would end up storing it at our shed and have a big pile of stuff for, I don't know how long.
Until we had somebody come in, or we could mill it right away and use it somewhere else?
Yeah, we've done it where we put it like in boat club or whatever, Steamboat, you know. I think what happened there, there wasn't enough, but I think there might be enough here to do short and then, you know.
Daryl, how does the width of that road currently present itself as far as in relationship, if it were to go back to gravel?
I think it's a little over, was it 26 foot wide roughly? Which is about right where we want them.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, you don't want to get too wide. One, they're harder to maintain that way and then it takes so much more material.
Okay, well, there is, there is a fair amount of traffic on this road at times of the year and personally, I think the road is narrower than most of our gravel roads now and my concern would be if we went back to gravel, if we started getting the washing and we meet traffic on that road, right now I feel secure getting off to the site because we've got a pretty good ledge. We've got pretty good support, but I think if it were to go back to gravel at the current width, I think as a safety factor on how far, how far we can feel comfortable getting over to allow, you know, to be meeting people. So that's a consideration I think it needs to be taken into that, you know, is the width there to go back to gravel?
Okay.
My question is, there's a big difference between going back to gravel and the, and the paving, of course. With the paving, is that gonna, is there, there's going to be savings to that down the line? Is it going to end up, I mean, like, how many years would it take to pay for itself and maintenance and whatever?
You mean if we pave it, then you don't have to touch it anymore, whereas you're rocking it every year?
Right.
We would probably only, with, with, when we maintain roads, right now I think we're running 300 ton a mile, so that's what we say a half mile, so we're looking at 150 tons a year, you know, and what's our ton, it's like eight bucks a ton. It's going to take a long time for the asphalt to be, you're going to have to keep up with crack filling and then you're going to have to paint it, so.
I, I think out of the three options, option two is probably not a good one. We're not doing the entire road. I think you're going to have the road break down as you go.
Well, I think with option two, I mean, a lot of people are saying, a lot of the letters are saying, "Don't seal coat it again," but what you're looking at with a seal coat, you're looking at the bad spots. But we're going to core those out and put asphalt in those spots, so the rest that's holding up, you're seal coating.
The entire road?
You would only seal coat what you did in asphalt.
Okay.
Yeah, because the asphalt, we're looking at 236 feet and then 400 feet.
Are you talking about the runout?
The runout longer is the 236, then there's a 400-foot section and then there's another 50-foot section. So those would be cored out and then put six inches of asphalt in. So then the rest of it, and I can't remember, it's in good shape, then you can seal coat those parts. So you'd have some asphalt here, seal coat, asphalt, seal coat, which is, I mean.
At 110,000 versus do the whole road for about 264? And, and the part we're doing was that roughly 20% of the road that you would do the asphalting? Core out and asphalt?
Percentage it is?
Uh, rough estimates, I mean, what we went through the other day.
I think it's what, 3200 foot? So you're looking at six. Yeah, 20% roughly.
So for just under half, we're doing 20% of the road versus doing the whole road at that time?
With asphalt, yeah.
Yeah.
Doing 20% of it is asphalt.
Right.
But you need to asphalt the rest, I think.
Or 50,000 to do back to gravel with the run strip and including that 50,000 gets rid of the milling, I think there was about 20,000 dollars in there for milling.
Yeah, milling is 20,000 and then actually the asphalt intersection at the end, which is, to me, needs to be, is in every one and that's 16,500.
Right. Which I, I think we should mill it, I don't, I don't want the stuff laying around.
Good. And that milling, you know, I mean, if the west didn't want it at the park, I mean, there's lots of people around that'll take it.
I, I have a concern, I'm with Steve, I mean, as, as a safety matter and equipment isn't getting any smaller and so, you know, just trying to, you know, get two vehicles down, some people aren't as conscious of, you know, yielding and looking at the road driving ahead, so it makes me nervous about the bigger equipment being on the roads. I mean, that equipment isn't getting any smaller and people aren't driving any slower, so, you know, going back to the gravel concerns me, just, and then having any bit of rain washing out and, you know, leaving you with next to no shoulder.
That can happen with the pavement.
Right, right. Yep.
I have a hard time paving a road that was never originally paved and I understand back in the 60s when, according to their letter, that they did the seal coating to help secure for muddy roads. We also have now have larger equipment that could also do the same to keep the roads up for the downtime. If, if we go and pave this, I have other people asking to have their roads paved also. And where do you stop? And where do you stop? It would be nicer if we could go back and, I'm not saying go back and seal coat it, but if we went back with, like we did on the landfill road, where we're trying to calcium chloride that to hold the base, to create something, a mix in between, would only do it for so many years if we went back to the gravel. Those people that did purchase their places did purchase a, what they felt was a hard surface road that truly wasn't an asphalt road.
Right, but how do you know that when you're buying it?
Right. So I feel for that also. And I understand the church, there's a lot of churches and a lot of cemeteries that aren't on asphalt roads as well. And I know the park's also an issue there. At some time, we talked that we could move that to a farmer market road and find sources of funding that way too, correct?
You could, but I don't know that you're going to be able to get it through the farmer market review board.
So if we did go back to gravel, I agree with Steve also, I like the wider roads for pulling equipment down. You can't get over far enough. And then you do get leery on the edge. If they do crack or bust off the edge a little bit, you're going on a steep ditch, on a shallow ditch, it doesn't scare me near as much.
There really isn't a lot of room to widen that road without buying them right away.
But I'm comparing 50,264,000 also. And a lot of people that want their gravel's paved. What are your guys' feelings?
I tend to agree.
And we'd have it, and we'd have the gravel in shape faster by fall, I would assume. Darrell, if we went to gravel, it'd be in shape by fall?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I think Steve had another comment.
I honestly, I would be in favor of seal coating. I think it's, I think it's an in-between. It compensates both, you know, parties' interests. As long as we, the other thing is, is that the approach on S-57, like Darrell said, is really bad. And it's also at the top, at the point of the hill where you can't see to the south. It's so rough there that when you're coming up on S-57, you really want to go slow because of the roughness and, but yet you shouldn't be going slow because you need to be getting out on the road for fear of traffic coming from the south. So if we could seal coat as well as get the runout of new blacktop, I think would really put the road back into shape for probably another 20 years.
Would we be looking at milling out everything and doing a complete new seal coat on the road?
There would be some milling.
Or are we looking at option two then?
Right.
Yeah, we're talking option two.
Okay.
That's where I'm leaning, if it buys us some time and it makes it safe and, you know, usable for both, you know, people going to the church and the cemetery and the park and the residence, but also for commerce, I am leaning towards option two of seal coating, the milling and seal coating and improving that approach.
On option two, it's a double seal coat, so the price is 109,800. But we could always do the second seal coat at a later date and that's, I think, 11,000 they've got put in there. So we could bring that project cost to under 100,000.
But this doesn't run to the church or the cemetery?
It runs to the church.
Not to the cemetery.
Just better access.
Yeah, nothing goes to the south.
Around the corner, okay.
Right.
I think that was just a request by the group.
Yeah.
By doing this reseal coating, I guess I'm concerned, the only one concern I have about that is you're leaving some existing road in.
Not all the road's bad now.
For how long? If it's busting apart here, how long will it take for, will you get the 20 years out of it? Or will we just get another five? What kind of shape is that in?
I think the parts where we're putting the asphalt in are the parts where that's where the problems are. I don't think they're going to, they're going to, if you had them here, there's a reason why there's the potholes here. Either it's wet down there or, you know, grade soft. It's not going to just automatically just shift in.
Okay. That was my concern about option two is when you're patching.
It depends on how heavy loads it starts running.
Heavier.
We'll send the blue coat out there and set.
So Darrell, how much of it would be totally reseal coating? Would it all be?
Everything is.
Roughly 80%?
80% of it would be seal coated.
I think it'd put it back in okay shape for longer than five years, Lance.
Okay.
And we could, we could seal coat it again like in a year or two. And that's kind of what you need to do anyways to try to keep going with that.
What timeframe would that be? We still have to take that out for bids and?
Nope, this is considered maintenance.
Is this something that could be up and running by fall as well?
Yeah, I think we have this ready.
Hate to have it half-done when harvest sets. I'm okay, but I don't think Steve would like it.
They only start at harvest time. Normal contractors receive it. They can't work at harvest. They can't work during planting. You can't work during wet dates. You can't work during.
From there, are you asking for a motion or are you asking just opinions or now you know which direction you want?
Which direction does the board want to go?
I guess I would be in favor of option two then.
Yeah, I would, I'll second that motion to go with the seal coating option.
So you wanted a motion?
It's been moved and seconded. I wasn't sure yours was a motion.
Okay, so I would make a motion, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to go with option two with the seal coating. Any discussion? I think we've had most of it.
I'll agree with that one. I'm getting old, man, take care of me.
No more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Darrell, you got directions? Took a couple of years, but.
What doesn't? I bet you I can get this done before the weight study.
And thanks for your patience, Steve. I know you called in a couple of years ago. We've had some other calls and. From there, I can go to utility permits. I don't have one. Secondary roads? Darrell, you got anything for roads?
Dave said he has a hair appointment. We need to move this along.
All right, from there, I'll go to item number 16, which is open in fiscal year 2018 fuel bids.
We only received one bid.
One bid.
Makes it easy.
All right, this is for the cost above their invoice price. Last year was at 10.4 cents. And this year they have 9.9 cents. And that's for the secondary roads department and conservation.
Would you like to take them back, make sure everything's? Would you like to take them back, review them, make sure everything's correct, bring them back to us next week? Is that what you guys would like?
It's the only bid, it's good.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Farm Services or Ag Managed FS for 9.9 cents over the invoice price for fuel for secondary roads and conservation for fiscal year 2018.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Dave, you get to jump in on this anytime?
I'm good.
All right. Hearing none, or all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now I have is open fiscal year 2018 corrugated metal pipe bids.
One bid again for this also. From Contech, they have an office in Hinkenee. This is for our year's supply, but it's all different sizes of our corrugated metal pipe. So anywhere from 6-inch all the way to 48-inch pipe is what we have this year. So it's a total price of $52,154.
I do want you to go review that, take that back and review it. Make sure everything's in there that it's supposed to be.
Yeah, because there's a lot of line items here.
Right. Just take a peek at that.
Last year it was 72,297, but this is a lot less footage for pipes. So that's why there's a big price difference. And we had four bidders last year versus just one this year, so.
Okay. Another comment on that, this is where if people want to put a driveway in, you also buy the pipe for them?
They can buy it from us.
They can buy it from us at this cost, is that correct?
We have industry fee that we add to it.
Okay. I got a call the other day, somebody's looking for Culver, who did contact. I sent them here, why?
We prefer not to, I mean, we don't want to compete with pipe companies. So, I mean, if somebody wants to put a pipe in on a creek on their farm, we prefer not to do that. But if it's for use in the road, you know, like a driveway.
Okay. All right, from there, yeah, if you can bring that back to us next week and make sure everything's aligned. Any other business? Yes.
I have pictures from lower pine, like, taking this, we, granted that problems with lower pine are not just resultant from CAFOs and farm runoff and all that stuff, there are other problems. But given that, the fact that we got a CAFO, hog confine, instead of a third lake, that would have helped with this, I just want to again stress, I understand that you say your hands are tied. They did not put a gag in your mouth. You guys need to start thinking about this because this affects tourism here, it affects water quality, and we need to deal with it. So you may not be able to undo your hands, but you can open your mouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.